Ninety cents in America, and she's a Republican, a Christian, one nation, one God, individual, but living just as well.
Okay, we're gonna have a special meeting, we have a couple items we have to act on, so I'll ask if there's any public comment on the first two items on the agenda under special meeting. Okay, hearing done, first item is a resolution acknowledging map planner report on increase and improvement of facilities for Berthcliff Sewer District, DNI, and setting in public hearing. May I see attorney just give a brief overview of the process?
Sure, the town is undertaking a very substantial inflow infiltration project in the Berthcliff district. It's going across somewhere they could put five million dollars, and the town will have to undertake borrowing in order to pay for it. The town has no choice in this matter, it might add whatever consent order with the DTC. So, the first step in undertaking project is procuring financing. It so happens that under, I believe it's Town Law 202B, yes, when you're going to undertake financing like this for an improvement project within a district, you have to treat it as though it was an expansion of the district or creation of a new district. You have to prepare a map plan report showing what the improvements will be and what the costs will be, and then you hold a public hearing on it, and the people within the district, well, they will, and the town will, but particularly in the district, have an opportunity to come out and comment on how they feel about the project that's being undertaken and the expenses. And once that's done, the public hearing is closed, the board even notes yes to go forward with project or not to go forward with the project, and as soon as they vote yes, you're then in a position to undertake your financing for the project, which of course involves a separate set of resolutions. But this is for the project itself, and it's required because you're going to be financing it.
Okay, so I'll read the resolution, it's a matter of the increase and improvement of facilities of Berthcliff Sewer District in the Towne Hall, the County of Orange, New York pursuant to section 202B of Towne Law. And is there motion on it to introduce it?
Well, you read it, and then that gets filled in, through their resolutions, it's definitely.
Quarter calling for a public hearing to be held on, looking at November 16th, if everybody's available, at seven o'clock. Am I good?
Yeah.
Okay, where's the Town Board, the Towne Hall hearing called the Town, and the County of Orange, New York, behalf of Berthcliff Sewer District, and Town hearing referred to as a district, has caused McGoye, Howes, and Metzl, PC engineers due advice by State of New York, and the engineer to prepare a map plan report for the increase and improvement of facilities of the district for inflow infiltration purposes consisting of sewer main replacement, relining manhole improvements or replacement, point repair and other improvements or ancillary work requiring a connection therewith, as described in the report prepared by the engineer dated October 2021, which map planner report had been filed with the Town Board. And whereas the maximum cost of such project had been estimated to be five million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, whereas all a part of the cost of project may be financed through New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC, state revolving fund, SRF, and/or Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, a lien grant, and any such grant funds received or authorized for use to pay a part of the cost of such project or to pay the debt service related thereto. And whereas pursuant to the applicable provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, constituting Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law, and 6 NYC R regulations, Part 617, the Town Board has given due consideration to the impact a proposed project described herein may have on the environment, has made a final determination under SECRA. Now therefore be resolved, be ordered, that immediate Town Board of Town be held at Town Hall 183 Main Street, former New York, on November 16th, at seven o'clock PM prevailing time, to consider set increase in improvement of facilities of the district to tier-old persons interested, and the subject thereof concerning the same, and for such other action on the part of the Town Board in relation thereto, as may be required by law. Be a further order for Town Club to publish at least once in the Times Herald Record, hereby designated as the official newspaper of the Town for such publication, and post on the signboard of the Town maintained pursuant to subdivision six of section thirty of Town Law, a notice of such public hearing, substantial in the form attached hereto, as exhibit A, first publication thereof, and said posting to be not less than ten days nor more than twenty days before the date of such public hearing, dated November 1st, 2021, Town Board of Towne Hall. Is there motion on the resolution?
Some.
Second discussion, roll call.
Ms. Bunce?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Renzas.
Yes, motion is carried. Second item for the special meeting is, the board has reported an application for public event permit pursuant to chapter sixty-six of the code of the Towne Hall. Applicant is Jenny Blake, L.I.C.H.T., 401 Central Avenue, second floor of Laurel, Mississippi, I guess, three nine four four zero. Name and location of the event, RTR Media, film event, multiple locations, date and time of work, week of eleven eight, and potentially filming eleven twenty-two through eleven eight. Krista, do you have any dates specific on?
So, in terms of the public thing, they will have three specific dates, maybe two on the front end and one on the back end, but those dates still, I still have not received those yet, but it wouldn't be a large span, it would just be three specific dates, and they will get them to me as soon as possible.
Okay. Go with that.
Um, next, see, and writing, I mean, can you shoot an email in the morning or something like that?
I'm sorry, did you?
Could you send the dates and write, could you send an email?
As soon as I get them, we'll send them in writing.
Okay, and just my curiosity, what is a possible B-roll? I mean, I've heard of B-roll before, but I'm not sure how to.
I don't want to speak film talk, I'm not really, it's not my area of expertise, but I'm assuming what that means is just canned film that they have to be able to edit at any given time.
Yeah, B-roll is basically where you go to different parts of the town, or let's say you want to film on Main Street, you just like film foot traffic, or if you wanted to film people hiking, you would just film like the mountains, people hiking, so it's kind of like stop footage you use to fill in different parts of the.
I think it's like the roll instead of roll, that's what it would sound like, that it's something that's gonna be like a rolling event, where they're gonna go different parts of the town. So I think if we get the three specific dates for. Yeah, filming and public. So we can include that in the.
Absolutely.
Description of event documented, commercial, residential, and Main Street area renovations throughout town. Number of participants, ten. Assistance from Town Police, road closures, description of security, craft control, first aid, COVID safety procedures in place, sanitary facilities on-site, portable restaurants to be provided, description of trash removal, will dispose trash in construction and production. And that's the request. Is there a motion to approve the application subject to receiving the three specific days for public filming?
So when they, when they, when they do this, do they give a deposit? How does it work?
No, I think it works based on my discussion with the attorney, is they pay a five hundred dollar application fee.
Okay.
And then a thousand dollars for each day that they're gonna be actually filming in public space, which would be the three days that you're referring to.
So it'd be like thirty-five hundred dollars?
Correct.
Okay, and those fees are paid upfront?
Correct.
Okay.
So we would be looking for a check.
Okay.
And insurance.
And insurance.
And insurance, which is on there.
Okay. So some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Bunce? Yes. Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Renzas?
Yes, motion is carried. A motion to adjourn the special meeting to go into the work session, is there a motion?
Second.
Second discussion, roll call.
Ms. Bunce? Yes. Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Renzas?
Yes, motion is carried. Public comment, agenda items for the work session, any public comment? Okay, hearing done, the first item we have, festival of Hanukkah, menorah, is hopefully well, as do we do annually, requesting to place the sixth eighth of menorah in the Hall. Is it bringing time for the festival of Hanukkah, which begins this year on November 28th, and lasts through December 6th? And where lighting was especially so meaningful last year as it provide a healing and strength of this to all we are going through. We'd like to host the lighting just here on Sunday, November 28th, when the first candle is lit. Margaret Cottage can be available, we'd like to have the ability to serve food, drinks inside in a safe environment, in a safe way for all to enjoy. Thank you so much for your participation and help in always making this happen. That's Rabbi Sabrinsky, is that a monitor available? Will you notice here?
I think we're already.
Okay. Is there motion to approve?
Some.
Second discussion.
That's always subject to submission on the charts.
Yeah, sure does.
Ms. Bunce? Are we voting on this?
Oh, no, it's for the agenda, I'm sorry. It'll be on Monday's agenda.
We're just trying to.
So excited about.
We're rushing the scene. Okay, Lions Club wreath and roping sale, it's a letter from Phil Cameron, who's the co-chair. Writing to request permission for the former Lions Club to conduct our wreath and roping sales on Town Hall properties we did last year. Selling wreaths and roping for a total of four weekends, starting on the weekend of November 20th, 21st, and ending on December 11th, 12th. As you know, the former Lions Club is very active in our community, keeping with Onato we serve, also doing some substantial amount of money to charities and organizations. So they have been very successful in the past when they did come down to the Town Hall, so I'll have that on for the here to approve. Next item is on the darkroom, Jimmy Ferraro, Jimmy couldn't be here tonight, but I think he made a request to the board to consider a zoning change, and I think Steve, over the next month, before our next meeting, we should really have a plan to make.
Do you change that? Do you take it off the agenda?
I put it, I actually, we did take that one. Let me mention that, because we should, it's gonna be on it for December, but we did have it on when we put it on on Friday. So, but Jimmy couldn't be here, so Steve, we should between now and next month, take a look at that section of the code, the zoning, just to decide what, if any, changes might be considered.
Well, sure, we could do that, but you're gonna have to refer it to Kristen McDonald to look at it, and I can write whatever can be appropriate, but I'm, you know, there's nothing substantial change.
Well, that's why I talked to Kristen, could I at least take a look at it?
All right, so Monday maybe you vote to refer it to her, and then in December she'll have a report back for you.
Yeah, because I think we need that input before we can really give any serious consideration.
That's wise.
Next, Village and Forest Water District, water re-levee, you're gonna give an update. Steve, have you heard the latest on this?
No.
Apparently because of the governor's executive order about not basically being able to collect over years in water, and that executive order is in effect through December 31st, there's some question as to whether we can actually re-levee the water at this time. So they're gathering more information, the village is, and we're trying to get as much as we can to see. I mean, if it's a re-levee that takes effect January 1st, which would be after the, you know, expiration of the executive order, or what, but that might be something that, if you can find anything.
Yeah, well, look into it, I mean, boy, if you have to pull off on the re-levee until next year, the village is gonna go without those funds for a whole year.
Well, this is what complicates it, because of the software programs, they're not even sure that they would be able to go into the system to pull the information out later on. In other words, if it's not done now, they don't feel they'd even be able to accomplish at the time for the re-levee because it was put on hold. So we've gotta just see what's involved, but even if there's a way of doing it, they may not be able to extract the information. So it's a little complicated, the governor with his executive order didn't really make it clear, but it is an executive order.
All right, I'll look into it.
Okay. So you're saying the village is actually concerned that they're going to lose the data?
No, there's something about, if they do extract it and we can't re-levee it, there's something about them being able to actually get it back into the system.
Got it.
It's a complicated thing, but they said they're not clear that they can actually modify it and, you know, still keep the system a hundred percent intact, so. Yeah, whatever you can find out, Steve, we'll see.
I'll report back on it.
And maybe Joe McKay might have some information.
Well, it's the first time in the hall, it's his ox getting hoard.
Okay. Main Street parking study, we had the meeting at Margaret Cottage on parking on Main Street, and I think one of the things that we all kind of agree is we do want to take a look at it, and more of an in-depth look by actually putting together a request for a proposal from a traffic engineer to perform a formal study of the parking on Main Street. And the attorney's put together an RFP, you want to just touch on this, Steve?
Sure, as you point out, the Town Board had a public meeting to discuss proposals for parking along Main Street, and a lot of ideas were advanced one way and another, I mean, everything from building a three-story parking garage, to permit parking, to using Town Hall, I mean, a lot of ideas are very good, but I mean, kind of all over the place as far as what could be the best idea. And I recommended, I think Josh pointed it out at the public hearing way back when this first came up, have a parking study done, just get a traffic engineer, have him come in, take a look and say, these are what your needs are, here's my recommendations in order to, you know, solve your issues. And so I put together a RFP to hire a traffic engineer to prepare a parking study for the town to address the issue of parking along Main Street. Now, I mean, I put this together just with what I thought would be appropriate to be in the RFP, the board may feel differently, so I mean, if you look at this and there's, I know Dick mentioned to me, for example, I said, from Main Street to Academy, and perhaps Main Street to Town Hall would be more appropriate space to do it. But I mean, you know, none of these ideas are chiseled in stone, I looked at a few other municipalities who had put out RFPs for parking studies, and I took what I thought would be appropriate for us, and I left back what I didn't think was something that would be necessary to address.
Okay.
So look it over, and, you know, I don't know if you have a workshop on it, I don't know.
Well, if everybody's kind of satisfied with it, with that one change, then we can put it on the agenda for next week, and maybe move ahead, put it out there.
That's how the board feels.
I might send just a couple of changes, but I'll send them in like, you know. Tracking, so you can either accept or not accept them. Let's do it that way.
Okay. Next is a letter from the Village of Cornwall on Hudson. enclosed, please find a certified copy of resolution now from the Department of the State of New York, board trustee, on October 18th, 2021. Village of Cornwall Hudson is requesting tax exemption for real property taxes on village owned supply property for the year 2023. Assistant Attorney, you know, Judy Mahoney, Village clerk. This is a request we get from the Village, I'll put it on the agenda for next week. Next, Real Terms Street Lighting Proposal, LED conversion of the street lighting, this is actually something we've been looking at the past couple of years, actually purchasing all of the lights, streetlights from Central Hudson, and taking ownership and maintenance of it. At first we were working through NIPA, which had given us a couple of different proposals, and Virginia actually, you know, made a contact with Real Terms Street Lighting, and they worked up a proposal which is much more favorable for the town. So I passed everything on to Steve to take a look at, and Steve maybe just give a overview of what you review of the documents.
Sure, the whole point of this Real Term agreement is to replace streetlight heads. Currently, I guess it's Central Hudson charges a fee for streetlight heads, not the poles, just the heads, and they use the bulbs which they feel are most appropriate, which are probably the least costly to Central Hudson, not necessarily the best for the town. What Real Term would do is make arrangement for the streetlight heads to be purchased by the town. You'd own your, the town would own the streetlight heads as opposed to paying the fee to Central Hudson, and of course, it'd also make arrangements for replacement of the bulbs with more efficient bulbs in the streetlight heads. In the long term, this could result in substantial savings for the town in its overall electric costs. There's a lot of, you know, variables in there as far as, you know, the maintenance of the heads and, you know, if the hurricane blew through, you'd have a problem with damage, but I mean, assuming things go with the historic of law, the town should be ahead again at the end of the day. The cost, the estimated cost for changing out the streetlight heads and replacing them with new heads would be three hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. There's a smart lighting control option that goes with it, allows the town a little bit more control over having some brighter, some less bright, or having some turn off earlier, some turn off later, so forth, which would bump up the cost to three hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So there's some choices to be made right off the bat if you're interested in going forward, or you want with the smart lighting control version, or not have that feature. Real Terms provided a couple of draft form contracts. What they'll do is perform an inventory, in fact, it's this I'm doing, an inventory of the town's street lighting, and they'll pole by pole make a determination of what would be best in terms of new heads, bulbs, and the overall purchase that would be necessary, and come with a plan for the purchase and replacement of those streetlight heads. That's the contract that they'd be looking professional services, I mean, if they'd be looking for the town to sign. The forms that I have don't list the amount that they charge, it's a per pole charge, but I couldn't tell you exactly what it is. I've heard that their charge may be included within that three hundred and eleven thousand dollar figure.
The survey, the survey charge?
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars, and if we have a survey done, and we don't go with them to make the changes, we would have to pay the twenty thousand, but if we go with their plan, then it's included in the three hundred.
Well, we have to see the final contract, and I expect that term to be in there, so that would not, that'd be one less of a cost if you were happy. Once you hire them and they come up with a plan for installation, they oversee contracting out the installation, and they work with the town in terms of overseeing the installation, making sure that everything goes forward. After that, you're kind of on your own, they have a maintenance service program that you can sign up for, which consists of them overseeing the maintenance, there's two types of charges, there's emergency charges which are a higher rate, and then there's just regular maintenance type charges which are a lower rate, there's also a monthly fee that you pay to Real Term in order to have them oversee the maintenance of your streetlight heads. There's a couple of terms in the contract which I'm not wild about, let's see if they're negotiable or not, you know, there's an arbitration clause, for example, an indemnity clause, which is kind of one-sided as far as that goes, a limitation of liability, which most professional services insist upon, by the way, so I don't know if you're gonna do half money of that, but I mean, there's a few things that if it's possible, I'd certainly like to discuss with them if the, if the board wishes to go forward with this.
What triggers the emergency charges versus the monthly fee? So for instance, we're paying this monthly maintenance fee, so if there's an emergency and it's what, like 24 hours, they come out here, they fix it, and then it's like a higher cost?
I think there's two, there's two different ways we can do it, we can do sort of a blanket thing that includes all that, we can pay a certain amount each month, and then pay a smaller amount, and then pay an additional charge for each time they come out.
We'll have to see with the contract, because my understanding is that there's a small monthly fee that you pay no matter what.
There is.
And then on top of that, when you call someone out, there's an hourly rate for electricians, trucks, flaggers, if there's materials involved, obviously you pay those plus a markup.
Sure, if I recall, though, I think they, the goal would be to find local.
That's exactly.
Right, locals, yeah. Electrician.
They do it, yeah, they, they will put out the, all in all, we work with NIPA, and actually, they were, when we first started, it was over five hundred thousand dollars for this, and so fortunately, over the past two years, and they're coming up with Real Terms, reduced about two hundred thousand dollars. And half the lights have already been switched to LED by Central Hudson, so we would purchase those lights, and then pay the additional cost for replacing the remaining lights with LEDs, so that the town would own all of the streetlights. So we'll have that on the agenda for next Monday.
Okay, we have to get the final contract, if you understand.
For the, because the first step is the contract to start, authorize a survey for the.
That's right.
So I'll contact the, I think Steve Harriman?
Yeah.
Next, Continental Road Drainage Issues, a couple of residents had asked that my engineer attend this evening, and Sean is here, I just want to mention that he's working on the information for the applications that are being submitted, I think the application for the Continental Road planning grant.
To the, next Wednesday, November 10th.
Right. So you, that's moving along?
Moving along, we have.
New club, right?
Sure. Most of the information that we need to submit, so it's just a matter of filling out the forms and getting them signed to submit next week. We're also working on the Continental construction, so the, the one that's due next week is for the planning of and design of the replacement system in Hazrock and Robert Road, so then we're also gonna be applying for the November 30th deadline, which is for the construction of that project, and then also for the design and planning of the Continental Road portion, so that's due November 30th as well.
Okay, so you're working on that?
We are, we walked Continental Road last week, so our idea is to basically pick it up from where it meets the boulevard and discharge it down into the creek, lower down that Continental Road, so.
You have any questions I know you had to ask?
I do. When you said it starts at the boulevard and goes in circles, so it doesn't start at the Continental up where it meets 9W, you know that turn off in, not, there's two turns off 9W, there's the one up past where the Broken Bridge is?
Right.
So that's where Continental starts?
Correct.
So that's not where the project starts?
So we would be looking to start up at the boulevard, we could certainly, you know, if the board wishes to look at starting at 9W.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that much more road, and I feel like that should be a part of it, because my, my next question was, you know, the bridge and the water bed was part of, part of the flooding problem sometimes, you know, so if we're proposing to the federal government, may as well include the whole road, right? Like all Continental from where it starts at 9W all the way to the circle?
Oh, for the drainage, I mean, the engineer can conclude that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could.
Like if you started at the boulevard, it's kind of like, then it, there is still issues up there, it's just coming down into the drainage system.
I wasn't aware that there was, I wasn't aware there was issues above where the bridge is.
I don't know the direction.
Well, that's, I haven't heard many drainage issues up above.
Okay.
The water is coming down from the belt.
The stream.
That actually drains into the creek.
Right.
The top road of Continental Extension drains into the creek already. Right.
The creek that runs like down Continental?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 so this drainage project is separate from the rebuild of the bridge and the possible dredging of that area?
That's correct.
Separate.
Okay.
Because that's been, that's been authorized by FEMA, the bridge, and hopefully the stream work.
Does FEMA know that we asked for the dredging, or like, is that?
Yeah, well, we discussed, yes, I spoke to the FEMA representatives onsite, and we talked about, there's gonna have to be some work in the stream.
Okay, so that bridge rebuilt and the dredging is a separate project, separate fund, separate whatever, grants?
Totally separate.
Totally separate, and then the drainage from where it meets boulevards, basically the little circle?
Right.
Where it meets boulevard, right in front of my house, down to the circle?
Exactly.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Yeah, no, I was just, I mean, if we're looking at where is, everything that's coming down from the mountain draining to right now, because if you drive that in any heavy rain, that's coming right onto Continental, like, I'm not an engineer, but like, it's coming from there.
The problem with that is that's a state road, so we can only do the drainage off the Continental Road extension, which is our road, we can't go into the state and put drainage in the state road, they would never allow it.
Where's this, where's the state road?
NIPA.
Oh, I, I know, but the rest of Continental.
As a matter of fact, with the three bridge projects we have in Cornwall, the fourth project, as I can recall, that the state had is.
Cobert.
Right, right, the big cobert that's underneath 9W, right where that Continental Road is, so that's where it comes up being refurbished.
Where that stream comes underneath 9W, right.
Yeah, so that's already, I think they did start doing work for it, they've been up there.
Yeah, I thought they were mostly complete.
I think, I think what she meant was, I think you missed understanding, so where Continental starts at 9W, past the Broken Bridge, right? Like, when we just had that heavy rain a few days ago, it was like, forget about the bridge, and it was, you know, running down Continental and in my driveway from up above where the bridge. from up above where the bridge is broken starting. So the heavy rain still comes down hard in that area? I guess it would just meet where the drainage is going to start, is what you're saying?
Right.
Versus putting in drainage up higher?
Anything on the other side of the creek will run into the creek, anything below the creek will.
Will run into the drainage. Okay, yeah, thank you.
And when you're talking about dredging the creek, what portions are we looking at? Because there was some discussion about looking at the behind Ashley Way also. And the houses that come on Continental on the side of the creek.
We said we will take a look at that. I mean, FEMA, when I was with FEMA with where the bridge was washed out, that area there, we discussed it. And then when the comments were made, as far as the stream, we'll take a look at that as well to see behind Ashley, if there's anything that can be done with that.
Okay, this is not just Ashley, it's the couple of houses they get flooded on Continental.
Right.
Yes.
All right, so and regarding to Hasbrook, so I understand there was one grant that was applied to FEMA that is the one that is to be presented November 10th, right?
So there's one grant application due November 10th.
And then now there were two more that were available. One is for construction, what is regarding construction? So what do you mean by construction?
Construction of the Hasbrook drainage. So the one due November 10th would be for the design of that?
So they will only pay for the design, basically?
Correct. Then there's a second grant, so construction?
And then the second grant due November 30th would be for the construction of that design.
All right, and those are the two grants in there being applied for the Hasbrook Rubber Road? Okay, and then when you guys are presenting this, you're taking into account the underwater stream that runs all over under Hasbrook, right?
That will be during the design, yes.
During the design.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Just what were the dates for Continental for that? The same thing.
Continental would be the planet would be.
30th of November.
And then it would be the same for us, that would be like when the design is due? And then at some point, the construction is going to be?
That's when the grant applications due for the design.
Okay, and as far as the bridge and the water bed above it goes, you spoke with FEMA?
Right, we're going to be working with FEMA.
Totally different.
The engineer is going to start, it's totally different, the engineer is going to start.
So there's no dates for that yet?
No.
No? Okay.
Is that a hazard mitigation grant or is that a different grant?
No, that's, you know, the reconstruction of the culvert would be because of the declaration for.
Sure.
Through FEMA resources, right?
So the grant due on the 30th regarding Continental is only for design, not necessarily for construction?
Correct.
So if we get money for the design, we're now, is there another grant available for the construction? Because we can have a great design, but if we don't have money.
Based on the last couple of years, generally in the fall is when the FEMA grants are due. So it would, you know, we would likely want to apply next year.
They usually do have the follow-ons, after an event. You had an initial, and then within a year, or hopefully around a year or so, they'll come up with money for construction after the design work is done.
And you're still taking emails from people if we find more damage, right? To see if we can get to that threshold?
Anything that I get, I forward that to the county emergency.
Okay, because I know we were denied, but I guess they're still trying to.
We're still trying to send it, they're still trying to communicate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a question regarding that. So I don't know if you were aware, but you know, Pat, he works for Lee Ospita. He's, you know who I'm talking about, he lives in Hasbrook. But his house is owned by one of the brothers, who's Lee Ospiterian. So it's in Hasbrook because his house had about, like about 10 to 12 inches of water in the main flow. So I don't know if he was included. He never addressed it because he rents there, but it was a, it hasn't been counted.
Was it across the street from you, like?
But it's the one that sits in the back.
It's across from like one of her neighbors, it's like.
He doesn't have a basement.
That's what we visited.
He cleaned it up himself, but I don't know if he took pictures or not. But he doesn't have a basement, it was in his first floor, and it was about 12 inches of water.
But he just still.
Anyone else? Okay, Sean, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Sean. I'll be sure to answer the question.
Okay, next item is improvement of stipend for the highway superintendent who provided supervision for buildings and grounds for a portion of the summer as well as overseeing the full operation for the two months it fully operated. I'll have that on the agenda for $1,500 stipend for the extra duties that he performed. Next, I have an email and a quote from the assessor. It's for, call it NERMAP. It's a new mapping system that she obtained information from the county, they put the information out. It's a mapping system that will be helpful for the assessor's office, but also could be for any other department in the town that really wants to take a look at the geography of the town. It's $2,500 a year, and it's a three-year contract. So the assessor recommends it strongly because she said it's much better than the software they're using.
Is the county switching over to this?
She said everybody's going to this.
Oh, it's a J, it's a J S M.
Yes.
Okay, personnel, we have a letter from John Ferris, sanitation driver who's announced his retirement effective November 20th. A memo from Chief Hazer, resignation, part-time police officer, Sean Allen, effective 10/31/2021. That's what I have. Board members have anything? Public comment? Joe?
Oh. I was waiting. No, they're all up.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? I oppose, motion's carried. Thank you. I just worked on it a long time. Yeah.